I get confirmation that it's recording. It's like to pop up. There it is. We are rolling on this.
Okay, it is 7:01 on August 24th, 2022. This is the Enfield Planning Board. We are at the DPW Conference Room and also on the Teams Meeting Platform. Members present from my left.
Lynda Jones.
Dan Kylie, Vice Chair. David Frack, Chair. Silver Mayor, Secretary.
Brad Rich, Member. Tim Jennings, Member.
And on Zoom or Teams, we have.
Kate Stewart, Select Board X Officio, Member.
Okay.
Your alternates?
Do we need alternates? We have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have seven. We have a full board. Okay. Well, I'll do that. We have Jim Donner behind the camera and we have Whitney Banker, who is our Reporting Secretary. And we also have Rob Taylor, our Staff Person and Land Use and Community Development Administrator. Okay, so first order of business is public comments. And this would be comments from anybody who has something to say about things that are not on tonight's agenda. Susan, you're here through our conceptual.
Yeah, no.
Not now. And how about Monique? Are you there, Monique?
Yes, hello.
Yes, hello.
Monique, what is the purpose of your visit tonight?
Hi. So, Monique and Daniel are on the line and we're at 129 Algonquin and we received a notice because we're entering into a boundary line adjustment with our neighbors.
Okay, great.
So unless you plan to be silent.
Okay, we'll be getting to that in a few minutes. First, we have Select Board Report, okay?
Sorry, I'm not sure how good this connection is. Can you all hear me well enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The last Select Board meeting was canceled, so I have nothing to report on that. However, I do want to let you all know, if you have not already seen the news, that this coming Friday, they are going to do a little bit of a celebration and a viewing of the new fire truck. So that will be at the Union Station Fire Station, so Union Street, the main fire station. And it will be from 6:00 to 8:00. I think the kind of festivities, a little bit of something is going to be said. And there will be the traditional pushing of the fire truck into service. It will probably be towards the beginning somewhere, but everybody's invited from 6:00 to 8:00 this coming Friday to come down and see the new fire truck.
Okay.
That's in two days, not a week from two days.
That is correct. It is this Friday. Thank you for asking.
Okay, next we have our hearing, which is Land Use Case P, excuse me, 220801. The Mersky 2008 Irrevocable Trust is seeking boundary line adjustment to approve to simply split Tax map 43 lot 6, which is 1.2 acres, annexing half to each of the adjacent properties, resulting in two larger lots where there are now three. As a result of the annexations, Tax map 43 lot 5, owned by the Mersky Spencer Living Trust, will increase from 0.52 plus or minus acres to 1.12 plus or minus acres. And map 43 lot 7-1, owned by Danielle and Monique Beckley, is it? Hope I didn't butcher it, will increase from 0.83 plus or minus acres to 1.43 plus or minus acre. All properties are located on Algonquin Road in the R3 residential district. Scott, you're here to represent the applicants, I take it?
I am.
All right, tell us about this.
Well, you didn't leave me much to tell.
All right.
As you pointed out, David, there's a vacant lot in between two existing lots, both of which have residences on them. And the owners of those two lots are going to be splitting the vacant lot, half, six tenths of an acre going to each. So in this, being in the R3 zone, everything out here, pretty much on Algonquin Road is non-conforming. But these two lots will become more conforming or closer to conforming. And the third vacant lot, the former lot, will cease to exist. So, not much more to say about this one.
Cut it off on the map.
Nice and simple.
Okay.
And that's the lot.
We like these ones.
If they were in R1, they would be.
Do you want to point out?
Existing lots would still be less than an acre.
These are the two lots.
Okay.
Essentially share that lot. It will be over nick. Right, but they won't be R3s, right? Yeah, well, R3s, yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah, just we're running the line, you know, roughly down the middle of the lot. The topography is such that there's a ridge that runs right down the middle of the lot or running the line along the top of the ridge. You'll see on the map that there's some restrictive easements that are going to be included with the conveyances of the two parcels to, so there won't be any building areas that will be noticeable by the existing cabs and so forth. Yeah, this is, this one's about as simple as we get, so.
Oh, don't say that.
Don't say that. You want to do it or you want me to?
Okay, well, I'm going to ask Scott if he has any idea when these three lots were created.
Up top, I'm not sure, but they do go, they go back.
Prior to zoning.
Prior to zoning, I'm certain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the conundrum. We have three grandfathered and non-conforming lots. You are proposing to make two non-conforming lots. And the question that has arisen is, can we, as the planning board, create non-conforming lots?
From grandfathered lots.
From grandfathered lots.
Okay.
Or do they have to go into zoning and get a variance?
That's an interesting question. I've never been questioned when making something that is non-conforming, less non-conforming. That's never been brought up to me in all the years I've been doing this. So you're springing a new one on me.
Well, you can thank Dan for that.
In my defense, I thought of it when I was coming up the driveway. I just don't know. I'm saying they're not creating. Yeah, we are, we are. We are creating two new lots.
No, no, those two lots are there.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
I'm sorry.
I see them right there.
They are there as grandfathered.
Grandfathered lots. They're not there.
They're there now and they will be there when you're done with this.
Yeah, but it will be.
They're not the same as when we're done with them.
You can't, you guys can't create.
We are creating new lots.
No, we're not. We have to just substitute the word creating.
We're.
Facilitating or something like that.
But these are new lots. As soon as, as soon as. Altering the boundary.
Altering the boundary.
Okay.
We're not creating.
We are eliminating a lot.
Okay.
And we are expanding.
Then will, will you buy that it's a boundary line adjustment?
Can I throw one other? That's exactly what it is.
That's what he's, that's what the application is.
Okay.
That's exactly what it is. And if I could throw one more thing out there for you.
It's not a subdivision.
General subject, Dan, the state of New Hampshire, DES.
Yeah.
You know that they, I know you're aware that lots under five acres, they need to approve.
Right.
But when they have lots that are under five acres that are being made larger, that does not apply in that case also.
Okay.
Now, if we were doing the boundary adjustment between two sub-five acre lots.
Right.
And making one smaller.
Right.
Then that would make.
That's possible.
But making, making them larger, it's already non-conforming. You're making it less non-conforming. Their position is that you're doing a good thing. So, and I would take the same position with town.
Yeah, I'll take it. And I guess.
I buy.
Because I looked at it, as soon as he said it's a boundary line adjustment, then I said, okay.
Good enough.
Yeah.
No, I've never been hit with this.
Oh, yeah. That's what I had neither, because I was sitting there going, we have three grandfathered lots. The only reason they're, they exist is because they're grandfathered. Are we making two non-conforming lots?
Sure. Right. No, you couldn't create these lots on this zone now and we're not trying to, so.
Right.
Anyway, so that.
And Mersky also owns.
Almost as simple.
Right. Mersky also owns a lot on the other side.
Pardon me?
She also owns a lot on the other side.
I think so. I'm not sure if it's the exact same entity, but yeah.
It's the same.
Same, same family.
Right, I got it right there. Yeah.
And that is not involved, that's remaining separate law. That's not involved in this application, so.
I guess I don't have a problem with a few of them.
Okay, so go ahead, Lynda.
Scott, in your letter to the planning board, it says, there are some proposed restrictive covenants that will protect the present undeveloped state of portions of the land between the existing residences. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, that's what I pointed out a moment ago. There's a couple of areas that are going to have restrictions. One is along the top of the ridge, in kind of in the middle of the lot, that straddles the new line. There's a restriction above a certain elevation on that bridge that no new building is going to be constructed by either lot owner. Thereby, it preserves the buffer, it preserves the visual, the aesthetics of that area. And.
Is that a deed restriction?
Then there's one other small area that's, that's being restricted against having any septic system ever placed on. That's in the subtlety corner of the piece that's going to the butel. So those, and you know, I mean, those were given to me as requests by the, by my client to put on here. So I can't speak to the reasons behind them, but.
So making a, this one acre lots, it would then, would they then qualify to have an auxiliary dwelling unit attached to them?
I think they already, that's a.
It doesn't depend on.
Lots. Yeah, ADUs are exempted from acreage requirements.
Right, that's a vested right, according to, based on the eligibility of the regional county laws. But again, that's really kind of irrelevant to what we're proposing here now.
Okay. Everybody understands what's going on. Close the public hearing, which I never opened, but it's going to close. Board members, let's talk about this. What do you have any issues with it? Straightforward, I'm looking. Want to make a motion, Phil?
I will. Hopefully approve this lot line adjustment.
Motion made by Phil and who seconded it? Jim, okay. All in favor of approving the boundary line adjustment as presented, indicate by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
I had a simple one, I guess, to bring in. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Rest in peace.
You too. Thank you for everything you've been doing. Thanks so much. You too. Should I touch? See you.
All right, so next we have conceptual hearing. Susan.
Peter is not here.
Peter is not here, so I'm calling on Susan. Rob, can you pull up?
This is sold under my house two years ago. I'm a better.
I'm going to call up her map, just give me a second.
You don't want to put up that one.
That's the one on this one. Most of you probably know where Susan's place is down on Depot Street. This is her lot here. Do a little tiny bit more. So she's lot 46 here, yeah. And as I click on lot 48, this is a very complicated one, because that is actually state of New Hampshire, Department of Transportation-owned property that sits underneath Depot Street. It also sits underneath the ambulance building, the former train station. And as you can see in front of Susan's lot 46, and also in front of her neighbor's lot Angus, DeRochers.
DeRocher.
And so.
Most of his front yard.
Susan has been working very tirelessly and diligently with DOT, trying to convince them into selling her a triangle land that would be formed by straightening or continuing this line here down to the street, basically giving, getting her the triangle here. She's, she's had to come up with a purchase price and she said.
I have a trial if you'll let me do it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My house was built in 1851 and I'm totally sure that it was an acre, because what I'm trying to buy is a tenth of an acre. To square it off, really square, but to make it an acre. And I'm trying to do this so that my kids will have an easier time settling my estate. I bought that house from Steskevich in 2009 and rented it for a while. Steskevich bought it in 1963 with the help of Jim Champion. And he did not know that he did not own his driveway and his front yard, and that includes my perennial garden. Town of Enfield owns from my southwest corner post, which is a slice of railroad track down to Shaker Hill Road. The state owns Depot Street, a tenth of me, most of Angus's front yard, the land along the rail trail, and the land that's under the ambulance. The ambulance was moved there and I believe the depot was constructed there in 1906. And it's had quite a bit of history. By purpose in wanting to buy this, the price is going to be, are you ready for this? It's $1,100 service fee, which they already have had $500 for nearly three years, and $1,500 for a tenth of an acre. Which, when you think about it, isn't so bad when you figure out that Nylund paid $69,000 for two tenths of an acre, four tenths of an acre, further down on Depot Street. What's there? Steskevich gave the town a sewer easement on land he didn't know. Liberty has a pole there. They have an easement. Easements go with the land. I'm perfectly willing to pay the state $2,100 more to get this regularized for my kids. I will have to, I have a draft deed, finally. I have a draft deed. First, they made it to somebody named Douglas Colby. And then I said, correct it. So they corrected it once. And then I said, it still says Douglas Colby. And now it says Susan Brown. And you may see the draft if you want to. It's, it's only a tenth of an acre. Um, but it will make it much easier for my kids when they have to settle my estate if this was all taken care of. And that's why I'm here. There was some question, you, you explain the question about can the state settle a piece of land?
And they subdivided. That's always my question. My guess is yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because the state, they can do anything without paying any attention to our regulations.
My, my preference would be for them to take care of the whole kitten, the platoon, at the same time. But right now, they're basically, because she's been the most vocal and most determined of all of us, including the town, to settle this up, basically clean this up. The town is definitely talking to DOT, the town manager and Select Board. Kate probably has industry. She wants to weigh in on this. We, we would love to attain, obtain the land underneath our building. We own the building, but we don't own the land it sits on. That's always been a very serious conundrum in any place that I've seen it happen. There's a lot of those in White River.
Oh, sure.
That, you know, railroad land underneath somebody else's building, just.
Well, it wasn't. It had an oil business there and they put concrete over the floor. And there's a cellar under there that's generally, I suppose not now, full of water. It's a mess. And the Enfield Village Association has made parking lots on both sides of the ambulance. And that's kind of a mess. So what I want, when I send them the money, which I hope to do tomorrow, to the treasurer of the state of New Hampshire, I will get a deed, I will report it, and I will come to you and ask you to merge the two pieces. So that's, that's what we hope is going to happen. And so it'll be up to you to let us merge.
That's going to make you have a conforming lot then? Is that going to put you up to an acre?
It'll make me an acre.
Okay. She only needs half, which is a town water body, aren't you?
Yeah.
I have water and, I have water and sewer.
Oh, you're already.
Water and sewer. I used to have a great big oak tree, but now half of it's on the river. But I think that lot, back in the 19th century, was an acre.
It probably was.
And the railroad took the land. And as my side, Angus lives in what was the station master's house that was beautifully restored by the Danjies. The line of that triangle goes within 10 feet of his, of front of his house. He doesn't own his driveway and it kind of goes up. You can see how the river comes. And there's a little creek that comes off behind the bank and where the green is, there's a bank and there's a little creek that comes in there and goes into the river. That island, that's an island that says 113, was the mill pond, one of the mill ponds along the Eskoma River. I think the one that served, was it a Chris Mill downtown where the bridge crosses the river? That was, and, and it has filled in and the river itself has moved over to the other side. We got a beaver. We got a video of a beaver. So things have moved and things have changed and God knows what's going to happen to that island, but I hope it goes into conservation. And so that what I want to do is make my lot whole again. I guess that's what I should say.
So what, what you want to do makes all the sense in the world. And from the town's point of view, once they send you a deed for that triangle, we would have to merge that triangle with your lot.
Yeah.
I don't see any problem with that. What I, the conundrum is meshing the state, what they want to do, which is, I think, for their purpose, which is to sell it off, which they can do. But how do they affect the subdivision so that the town's records are up to date? Dan, you know how that happens?
They're going to make it into two lots. They're going to make the lot that they sell to her one lot and they want it in front of 47, that's going to be a sub. They can do that physically.
They can do that, but do they?
With a deed. They're going to do it with a deed.
Just with a deed?
Yeah.
They, they're calling.
They write their magic law and they say, that's my lot and I can, and I just sold it to them.
So be it.
The state, the state doesn't have to come to us to subdivide.
No.
That's what they're doing. They're basically subdividing that lot and selling half of it to her.
They've done it before.
They've done it more than once. It's in Kellerhurst parcel on Main Street that we just got done for right on.
Did they subdivide that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the state where they tore down the warehouse.
They, they chopped it off because the other part of it, held by DOT, which is the.
That's right.
They took it off of that.
You said he's only going to build six apartments instead of eight.
Six. Yes, so that's, yeah, they can do it.
They don't have to obey the town's regulations anywhere down. That happened when I was.
No, they're going to have to, they're going to have to do the new deed for that piece though, which is up to them.
I have, I have a draft.
You've got for your piece.
For my piece, yes.
Yeah.
And that's fine, so.
The town, they'll have to give the other piece to the town. That's it. It doesn't come through planning. Now, will she need to to merge? Well, will she need to come with a Mylar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I hired Harry Davis to make, I hired Burgess to make me one.
Yeah, we're calling it, we would call it is a voluntary lot merger.
Right, and we don't normally require for a lot merger.
Well, but, but sidebar again, when I bought that house, the pin by the river was missing. It got washed out in a flood. So I had the west line surveyed and that's when we found that piece of railroad track. That's kind of cool with six inches down and we did not put the granite post on top of it. Anybody can see it if they want to. And then Angus and I were going to jointly survey the east line, but he and I are not going along as well as neighbors should. And Harry Burgess came and surveyed it for me, because Angus, neither Realtor knew or said that we did not own our front yards, that that, that the state wants to sell the whole triangle, my piece and Angus's piece. But he has to, he has to have a survey of his east line and he has to deal with them and he has to pay them. All I want, and Harry has surveyed it, and there are granite posts at the corners and the posts, how do I say? The post at the east, at the southeast corner of my lot, southeast, south, southeast, not southwest, is a lot where Angus has some raised garden beds, because he insisted he goes to the corner of the ambulance. But he doesn't. And neither Realtor, he had a Realtor from New London, I had Leifie Cantland when I bought that house and Dick Dumey. And nobody said anything about the fact that we didn't own straight up to Depot Street. We thought we did. Mrs. Steskevich had gardens all over there. Um, so when it comes to when my kids have to settle my estate, I just want this regular.
Sure. And you know, if you want to have a Mylar of the entire property and file that with.
I intend to.
With the counties, that's fine. It's nothing that we require. The only thing that you have to do is come before us, say you want to merge the lots.
Yep.
And we say, of course. Thank you very much for coming in, Susan.
How long is it, do you think it'll take to get, get it through the state? I know it's been a while.
It's been, on October 19th, it will be three years since I sent in my letter and got a letter from them that said it might take a year. And we stood out there in the pouring rain in our masks.
Yeah. Do you have a, do you have a sense of how much longer?
Yeah, as soon as, as, as soon as I send the treasurer a check, they have to send me a deed and then I'm going up and see Kelly.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Get everything, get it recorded, because both deeds have, that deed has to be recorded before I can come and ask you to merge it. And wouldn't it be nice if I could do it by September 14th, but I doubt it. And wouldn't it be nice if I could do it by September fourteenth, but I doubt it.
Good luck, thank you.
But it looks like it's definitely.
Thank you.
On the near horizon already.
One lives in the hope, David. One lives in the hope, it's just, it's just incredible. I have sent emails to Lou Barker every two weeks and the subject matter is nag, nag, nag. And I've been doing that for more than two years. It's just.
At some point, we'll probably see Mr. De Roach or, yes, similar situation.
Yeah, yeah, we might.
I hope it takes him three years.
All right, so hopefully we'll see you back here sometime before the end of twenty twenty two.
One lives in the hope, lives in the hope. Who knows what's gonna happen next?
All right.
Thanks. Yeah, well, you can all come and we'll have a picnic on that tenth of an acre.
We're gonna hold you to that, so.
It's a tenth of an acre, when you think of that, it's nothing. But anyway, hey, thanks and thanks Rob for suggesting that we go.
Yeah, it may be a picnic with snow on the ground.
Yeah.
But that's okay. Um, Whitney, I gather that you were away.
I, yeah, I did not see your email until I opened my laptop here, but I got it. So I can make those edits. So if it would be helpful or we could go over that.
Okay. Let me kind of explain where we are on the minutes. I went through them and flagged a lot of what I call silly errors, like me being called chai tea or something.
Yeah.
Say that.
Um, and those just go on and on. And not knowing that Whitney was out of town, I, I sent her a marked up copy and said, can you fix these before tonight? And that will save us a lot of time. So we can either do these the next time.
Numerous small items that I, I won't mention.
Yeah.
Yeah, hold it for the next.
You wanna hold it for the next?
Cause I find a lot of little, a lighter mistake or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She makes her revisions, I will forward them out as soon as she sends me a revised copy.
Okay.
So you guys can review prior to the next.
I have a question, procedural question. So during these minutes, reading these minutes, I, I read something that I did not understand and I thought back to the meeting, I didn't understand it during the meeting. Is this the opportunity to talk about that or is it a different time?
Maybe after we fix, oh, we.
I, I, I think if there's something, I mean, if, if the minutes accurately reflect what was said.
It does.
Then this is probably not a time to talk about it.
Okay.
We can certainly talk about it under old business.
Okay, cool.
So I need a motion to table the minutes until our next meeting.
I make a motion to table minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty two, until the next meeting.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate by raising your hands and saying aye.
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 Okay, the August tenth minutes are tabled until our next meeting, which is on the what, twentieth, seventh?
September fourteen.
No, fourteen. Sep- September fourteen, okay. Um, old business. Wanna go first, Brad?
Sure, uh, I'm a minute just looked at when uh, Mr. Conkley was talking about uh, the uh, actually it's line one sixty, one fifty-nine, one sixty, one sixty-one, where he mentions, um, Mr. Conkley said he understood there had been issues with another Bog Road property. The name of Dr. Teese did not want to have this same type of issue. I was confused by that during the meeting, but didn't feel brave enough to bring it up. I'm not sure it's important, I'm just wondering if we need to know what that is. Or is that?
We do. I think I know what it was, it was uh, it was the, the, a, there's another pit. Right, very, very close, like I said, right next door.
Yeah.
That was formerly owned by the crates.
Yeah.
And uh, one of the crates was actually our police chief for many years.
Sure.
And so they used to, they used to use the, the pit for firearms training. Not just for our town, but for regional, so they'd be down there shooting a lot.
Right.
You know, for, for firearms qualification.
Sure.
I think an officer has to shoot something in the vicinity of five hundred rounds or something like that.
Yeah.
So when you get twenty or thirty officers and, and on one of those Saturday afternoon.
Got you.
It's, it's a good off and you have gunfire. So I think that's what he was referring to.
Yeah.
Cause I know that the, the Eastman people had concerns that there was gonna be firearms. And this, I mean, that gravel pits traditionally make a great place for shooting cause you've got, yeah, firm banks and big open spaces.
That's an issue for select.
Yeah, we, we've talked about it for the next meeting, it could be a condition of your approval that you recommend no firearms training, but as Dan, I think rightly pointed out, because it is the country we live in and we are a gun culture.
No, the state we live in, there is state law.
Absolute.
The state law, it says you cannot stop gunfire on your own property.
Right. Long as you're, it's a cost of national rights.
For enter people from the nearest neighbor.
That's right. Well, it, and even if it's more complicated than that, I think it might be if it was going to involve a public shooting or, or police department practicing, that seems to be a board of select.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, he could, he could have anybody there if he wants to shoot.
I believe, Kate can confirm this. I believe our officers now are, uh, have memberships in our, in our local gun club over here across Shaker Hill, so they can do their firearms training at that location.
To the best of my knowledge, that is the case. Um, I just wanted to, there were two issues, right? There was the, the gun issue, but the comment that was made by Mr. Conkey, I don't believe was related to the gun issue. It was directed at Dr. Tice. Uh, and if you review the conservation minutes, uh, I'm gonna be very careful how I say this. There was an issue between Dr. Tice as an abutter to another parcel that had a homeowner who wants to build. I am an abutter to that parcel as well. Um, so I recuse myself, so I wanna just make it very clear to everybody, but there was an issue of some trespassing and some other problems in which Dr. Tice did not recuse himself as a member of the Conservation Commission and it's pretty well documented, um, it is the Peter Thurber property. So he had a pretty.
Same, yeah.
Peter, Peter Taver, sorry. Um, and, you know, so there are, there's some contention there and it's well documented in the conservation minutes. Um, it also came before the select board, we remanded it back to conservation um, to be overseen by somebody who wasn't an abutter because it was a violation of our town's conflict of interest policy. And in the interest of not violating it myself, that's all I'm gonna tell you, is you can look at the minutes.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome, I'm not trying to be smart, but I do try to follow our rules.
Also, I hear the person that takes conservation minutes is fabulous.
I wonder.
We love her.
Um, on the subject of the Conkey application, I was doing a little bit more reading and research to try to better understand some of the laws and issues that we are gonna have to deal with or have dealt with. Discovered that I bespoke at our last hearing when I said that any decision that we make on this can be appealed to the CBA. That is incorrect. Any decision that we make, if someone disagrees with it, they can ask for a rehearing or they can go directly to the state court. CBA has nothing to do with it. Um, the second thing, I discovered that the, one of the Southern New Hampshire uh, planning commission, regional planning commissions had put out a handbook on excavation. And I sent that to Rob. And I would appreciate if you would send that off to everybody. Um, the first third of it or so contains a discussion on the regulations and the set, the middle piece um, contained some court cases, none of which I thought really mimicked what we're dealing with. And then the last part is uh, suggested model regulations, which is something that we might think about in the future, but not right now. So that's all that I have to say on the question of Conkey situation.
Is that handbook small enough that it could be printed for us?
It's what, eighty-eight pages, something like that.
Is it online?
Um, I.
No, it's on, it, I mean.
Is it electronic?
You can find it online, yes.
I would send you guys a link, but I could certainly, if, if Tim would like a printed copy, I could certainly print it. I would not wanna print for everybody, if you guys are happy with electronic. But yeah, a few of you want printed copies, we can do double sided for forty pages, Rob.
Okay, so.
Well, I can probably get that done. I'm not happy to do, we got a big printer here, so.
Rob, can you find, do you find the link or do you want me to find it and send it to you?
Oh, I've got it, pull it up now.
Uh, 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 no, I sent you the actual document.
Yeah. Do you want me to pull the document up right now?
You don't have to, no.
I, I'm happy to send the, the link to everybody, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Download the document off the link.
I'm surprised when they were, Eastman people were talking about uh, learned about their aquifer and it being only at ten feet, was wondering how close any firearms practice was because they would be shooting lead, which would then reach into the aquifer.
What's done is done.
We're getting into a very weird area here, okay? That's continued here, we cannot discuss anything relative to the hearing. Giving out that is okay, but we can't talk about the hearing itself because the hearing's been continued.
Okay.
And they have, they would have to be here.
Okay.
Including Mr. Conk.
I take that, I take that. Um, for the next meeting, I know I've, I've spoken individually with Tim and with Linda on this, um, because both of them were not present for the first session of the hearing. Um, and we have alternates who took your place. If you would like to sit on the hearing, you have to listen and view the tape. Once you're up to speed, at the beginning of our next meeting, before I open the hearing, or actually after I've opened it, I will ask you if you have viewed the tape and if you feel you have a good understanding of what went on. If the answer is yes, you're certainly welcome to sit and be full board members. If you don't feel you have a good understanding of it, um, I would appreciate it if you would say so and then one or both of the alternates will continue as board members.
I've already been, I missed, so.
Okay.
Uh, comment on that, I, and I, I will do that, I, no problem at all. Uh, and it sounds like an item that, or a procedure or a requirement that probably part of our policy. If it's not, I mean, if it's just a decision.
I'm pretty sure it's, it's in our policies and procedures.
Okay.
And if it's not, I know I took that from the state planning handbook, which should be part of your binder. Um, somewhere between old business and new business because, no, actually, this is, no, it is.
Well, I have another.
Okay, go ahead.
Conkey application, and it's not specific to that application necessarily. But the, the situation which first, when, when a, when an applicant comes before the board with an incomplete application, I'm sure everyone really hates that. Don't really want that determination to be made at this point for rendering decisions, the application's incomplete, so a lot of time's been wasted and so forth. Spends, et cetera. Um, so being new to the board here, I'm not quite sure how this plays out. This happens in other towns, but it would seem that um, a judgment would at least be rendered when the application's received that would be, would have to be by. Uh, but this application is, is really incomplete and communicate that to the applicant, which point they could say, well, I wanna go to the planning board anyway. Okay. Or we're telling them that, you know what, you, you really need to do this, this and this. You're gonna waste your time if you don't want the board other ones. I'm just curious how that's played out in the past, if there's anything we could do about that. Thank you.
Basically, as you suggest, you know, Rob does the initial screening and it should, he should make an initial decision whether an application is complete or not. Uh, if there's a question, I'm happy to take a look at it and discuss it with Rob. Um, I think the Conkey application was particularly incomplete, shall we say? And, you know, I would certainly entertain a motion from anyone at the outset of the hearing to say that this application is not complete. And the board could talk about it and could, we could have a vote. But i- ideally, an application like that should not even get to our table. We vibe it, so I'll try to do better going forward.
Yeah, so, so at the beginning of a hearing for a particular applicant, that might be a question to, to ask ourselves. Number one, before we get involved with this, start asking questions, liberating, et cetera. Do we feel like the application appears to be incomplete?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you gotta, a factor though, where when you do the application, you send out all the letters to all the people and everything as part of the application process. And then if everybody shows up and part of the application isn't complete, you can't send everybody home, that's part of the problem. See?
I do.
You know, so un- unless you get all the paperwork in place first and then send out, you know, and say, have a couple of people check and say it's all there, it's complete, and then send the letters out to all the abutters.
Yeah, timing wise, that.
Yeah, that'd be, I know, timing wise, that may not work. So you gotta kind of fudge along sometimes.
Cause the laws. The law is real quick about it. You actually don't have to give the, give the thing to the abutters until five days before the hearing. Okay. Which in a lot of people's cases is gonna be pissed off because
Yeah, no kidding.
I've got a hearing, you mailed it out five days ahead, they got it two or three days ahead.
My phone just reported what you said, Dan.
See?
I don't, I don't.
Likes me. Yeah, I mean, that, that's the problem, is the abutters, so that you could. I mean, you could in theory make sure the thing was complete before you sent it out to the abutters, but I wouldn't wanna be sending it out five days in advance.
Right.
We had enough of a problem.
I mean, there's a, there's a deadline by which.
Twenty-two days.
You have to receive the application, the notification.
Right.
And you've communicated to the applicant that this is the deadline, I need to give your application. However, what you should do is a week prior, get it complete so I can review it, tell you whether or not it's complete or not, something like that. Uh, and then if it's incomplete, again, it's up to the applicant if they wanna go forward or not. And I don't know, do you have the authority then to not send the abutters if you think it's incomplete? I think uh, I, I think what you're saying is actually appropriate at the beginning of the hearing where the, they can ask, you guys can ask.
Where the, they can ask, you guys can ask the first question is, is the application
Mister Administrator, is this application complete? Obviously beforehand, I can work with the applicants, tell them between me and them, that, that I think they should provide more. I mean, I think the problem with this one was Mr. Conkey felt like he had given us a plan, his plan was to turn it into a broad, that was his plan, all right? That's not really a plan, as everybody, I think here agrees. Uh, he has just come through with his plan, which I will share as soon as possible with all of you guys, we can have a copy of that.
But he checked off the, that's my plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and it was during the hearing that we said, we don't think that's enough of a plan. But we couldn't do that because in fact, in fact, the application was complete, because he checked off, yes.
And as we've done for other stuff, like you can ask for waivers for certain requirements that we have. But those should be in writing for the hearing, so
They have to be, they have to be asked for before
Yep, right.
Before the hearing.
Yep, so at this point, I don't want to get into specifics about it, but I think this is general enough question.
Yeah.
Do we think we've communicated to Mr. Conkey what it is it's lacking?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was all taken care of.
Yeah, he's got, he's given you a plan.
He's come in with this, with a, with a resignation plan, it's like a five, six page document. I know that. Get tuned, deep in the weeds.
Right.
Very deep in the weeds.
Yes.
Another, uh, procedural thing, since I spoke on something that's an ongoing issue that isn't on the table tonight, can I retract those words and not add them in the minutes? Because I didn't have spoken about them.
Nope, nope.
You can, but they, they can be in this minutes, today's, today's minutes.
Okay.
Right, not on a prior meeting, that's
No, no, not on a prior meeting tonight.
Oh, no, I don't think you can retract those because you said no.
Yeah.
But the new minutes for tonight could reference her feelings on the subject.
Yes.
If you were reading them in sequence, you would understand that there was a change of, of understanding, right?
Right, yes.
Kate also spoke on the same thing, the same issue, but so
Right.
Uh.
They'll go down in the minutes.
Okay.
Because it's what happened. The minutes are a recording of what actually went on. Um, on a sort of related note, uh, on application, Kellinger. Um, Minor, minor lack of information on what the ZBA had done by way of specific dimensions that were waived. So I spoke with ZBA chair and asked if it might be possible to include specifics, and I explained that, you know, we we get an application, it says he got a waiver, and then we got referred back to a ZBA decision, and the ZBA decision commonly, at least from the one CBA being that I've been to recently, doesn't put dimensions in their decision. So we have to go back to some set of minutes. And I said, wouldn't that be a whole lot more sense and easier for everybody? If when the ZBA makes their motion to grant a dimensional waiver, if the amount of the waiver was part of the motion? Yeah, that's a good idea. So that's kind of where I left it, and I think they were going to discuss it at their next meeting. And Rob, can you pick up the story from there?
What's that, uh, I think it was Tim that mentioned that at the front end, were you the one that mentioned the? Well, what I think if I remember correctly, what I was looking for was after the ZBA has ruled, and we get a copy of their statement in our package, we thought that happened.
We did get a copy, but it didn't have any useful information in terms of how much of a waiver they, they granted. So I was not very sure.
And I had, I had no idea.
Right, we had no idea. We, we, we made a decision on a site plan completely blind to what the set, what the allowed setbacks were.
How, how did we do?
I have no idea, because I, I still don't know. I mean, you know, at, at, at that point, we were going on faith. And usually when you have an engineer involved, most of the time, it's pretty up a night. And I don't think Kellinger's the kind of guy to want to fudge something. I think he goes by the board. But just in terms of, you know, making the process easier for everybody, having one document that anybody can go to, which would be the decision of the ZBA, uh, hopefully they will do that in the future.
Yes, so we have.
You have.
Well, we, we have agreed that's what we'll do.
Okay, okay, great.
The planning, the zoning board chair is committed to that.
All right.
And it's interesting because it falls right in line with, I don't know if any of you guys have attended the the summary of the legislative changes that happened in the last session. But the expectations compared to this all the time for all ladies boards, particularly selling. So So the ZBA communicates a decision signed by the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Official document.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we get a copy of that, we're hoping it could be more detailed in the future. Uh, could we not also, if it's available, the timing works out, have a copy of the minutes with that as well?
I suppose we could.
So that deliberation that occurs, things that are said, if I'm researching an applicant's project, I'm finding that information. I think it came out at the last meeting, we do pu- publish all of the minutes or
It's online, everything's online.
So, yeah, so, but I'm happy to share her copy.
Yeah, there's, well, no, he just sent it to us within the packet.
Yeah, like, yes.
Like as a attachment to the packet.
Together here, this is the hearing application, right? And it's, all that CBA stuff's on there. That's, that would be good.
So I can at least read it.
Yeah, and then a follow-up on the other end, once we approve uh, an applicant, you render a, or you write the decision, I write the decision, I give it to Rob, he fills in a little bit of boilerplate detail, like when it was advertised, when the butters have their mailing done. Yeah, remember what else?
Okay.
And then the decision is, I sign it, and it gets mailed off. Okay, is that a copy of that here in, in website?
I don't think so.
We don't post decisions, no. This goes into the permanent record of the file for the, for the property. Okay, and I would like to get a copy of the decision, just to sort of come full circle in the process. I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I, I just like to get my copy of that. I, I think it ought to be on the website. Minutes are there. Deliberation, official decision, that looks like, you know, we'll see that as another tab.
I, I think that's a reasonable request, and when I was doing this kind of stuff on the other side of the river, uh, the entire planning board or development review board uh, would actually have to sign the decision, which means in theory that they read it. Uh, Apparently that's not the practice in the legislature. But I don't see any reason why once, you know, we have the final ready for me to sign copy of this decision, why you couldn't, why Rob couldn't send that out to all planning board members.
Yep.
Send them a digital copy.
As a matter of practice right now, we don't necessarily publish the packets of related documents for all land cases. I would love to see us get to that point at some, some point in the future. Great to have all that. It's another layer of transparency.
What, what's holding us back from doing that?
I think it's probably website functionality, necessarily have a place to put it right now on the website.
Can we find a place?
We could certainly, at some point, we're going to be doing a new website. So certainly, Kate's got it, so we certainly
Put it in the planning board section.
Yeah. Yeah, and then Then I, I, I think this is a problem with, with every town record. Um, Let's see, like the Keller application. Is that, was that Mickey's? I'm thinking of, pardon, which one was the Mickey's?
Mickey's?
Yeah.
I think it's the patio.
That was the patio.
But that's not Keller.
No, Keller is the second apartment building on Main Street.
So we, we made some, uh, requirements on, on top of the, you know, and so forth, and you know, you know, someone's going to follow up when it actually gets built, make sure all that gets done, so. But, uh, what happens fifteen years from now? And want to know what that decision was, what was in it, what are things currently being followed in? In other words
That's on file, there's a file. Rob, Rob, Rob keeps that decision with the property file? Am I right?
Yeah, I've got them for
I mean, there's file cabinets right above your head that have plenty more decisions going back probably to nineteen
And they're always pulling them out, there's always something to look at. So this, like the lot with Conkey, presumably there's a file that had, you know, with information
Yep, yeah.
Prior to it. Yeah. Yeah, that's a full, uh, the, one of the butters that was here at the meeting was able to go to Julie, our assessing administrator, and pull, uh, in that case, it was the intent to excavate uh, documents that are filed by the previous owner to see, you know, that it was previously used and reported as gravel pit. Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna let that go, man. That could be carried another step further, but I think we're got plenty Yeah, plenty to think about.
Wheels of government move, move very slow.
Just as an FYI, I have been instructed by the town manager to, I've been reviewing this summer, we've been reviewing software that's specifically designed for everything that you're talking about. Uh, and we're leaning towards that, we've, you know, we've got to make some decisions on budgeting and so forth, because software's uh, expensive, as you're probably more aware. But it would make, it would make things a lot more smoother. Obviously, we're very paper heavy. We're still recording on Mylar, which is going to a, a slot in a, in a drawer up at the registry, but they do scan it. And so you can access their stuff electronically, which is really cool, even stuff that is really, really old, you know? Even colonial documents are available now through a electronic search of the registry, which is really cool. But, uh, our, our goal here is to make the system, basically the process more electronic in nature, such that you can fill out the form on our website, that basically electronic versions of it, and then it kind of flows through various, people can see it, and there's permanent record of it electronically, and it's available in the cloud. I would imagine at some point, there's like an electronic login for all you guys, so you can access the stuff. It is, it is hard because we do have people, Kurt is one of them, that don't get many electronic, give me paper, I want to see, I want to see the map. So it's a little bit of that back and forth, I mean, we're sort of moving in the direction that eventually it's all going to be electronic. You know, it's going to be PDF documents, and I, I have a friend who's in, in business in Lebanon, and they had literally fifty file cabinets of all the orders for their company, going back to nineteen seventy-two. And then they hired about three years ago, they hired a company to come in, scanned it all, it threw everything in the dumpster, gave a whale file cabinet, everything is now electronic, it's all in the cloud. And some people like that is awesome, but a lot of the people at that company are like, oh, what a, what a disaster.
Sometimes it's harder to find electronically.
Yeah, so there's, you know, it's going to be a trade-off, definitely if we do go completely electronic. Ed has said that he would like me to research that for all the files we have upstairs. We're very paper heavy. And so it would be a tragedy if we had a fire in this building, we would lose everything. Um, and same thing downtown, I mean, they've got a supposedly a fireproof wall down there, but you and I both know that if they're, if that building burned, we lose a lot of stuff forever. And I think the town records did in fact burn back when that happened, but a lot of stuff was lost.
Yes.
And stuff gets misplaced. I think, uh, my brother told me that there was a guy that used to work for the town who decided just to, one day to take a bunch of stuff out, burn it in his house. So like minutes from old planning board meetings, they're gone, that guy burned. So we unfortunately don't have those. Luckily, we do have stuff here, uh, minutes, going back a long ways. Electronically, they're in the cloud. It is a real big challenge for, I think, all of these municipalities, how do we, how do we transition away from heavy paper to electronics and searchable, it's one thing to have, have it be electronic, but it's another thing to be able to say keyword, you know, David Frack, have all those documents pop up.
So to Kurt's point, you know, if you have a PDF, it's really hard to measure stuff.
Yeah.
But if you have the CAD software from which the PDF was made, which Scott has it, engineers have it, but us guys here on the planning board, you know, we don't have it, the town doesn't have it. So if, if Kurt wants to check a measurement or a scale or something like that, uh, the only way that he can really do it accurately is with a, an accurately printed paper copy.
Yep.
And
Or with a giant monitor. Problem is, most of us are using one of these, the monitor's so small, it's just, it's really hard to work with. You've got a, if you've got a paid monitor, you can't, can't do measurements on it. There are PDF, uh, I use a simple software that work where you metered the scale of the PDF drawing, you can then actually, and you really, pretty much like a pen on, on a cane.
Um, Is that something that maybe the town could buy, or is it cheap enough that the rest of us could buy it, or is it footwear?
I, I think it could be, um, it could be a subscription service for so many seats, and maybe planning board members and others that needed I'll, I'll get you the link to that, Rob.
Yeah, that would be great. I hope that that will be
So otherwise, it's about fifty bucks to buy it.
It's not unreasonable. Uh, you know, for software, but, uh, I'm sure none of us would want to shell out fifty bucks, given our pay grade. Okay, new business. The state planning office has come out with a certification program for planning board members. It's an online test based on the planning handbook, which is part of your binders. Um, When you're done, they instantly send you a PDF of a certificate, which you can then print out and frame.
What's your certificate look like then?
Uh,
I'm just kidding. I don't need to show
I, I sent it to Rob. Uh, so it, I, I think it would be nice if everybody would take the effort to take that test.
I think twenty out of thirty.
You took that already?
Twenty-eight out of thirty.
That's good, that's what I got too.
Did you, as a
Did you do it as an open book?
Practice or?
No.
Really?
I did it right off the No, I did it right off the test.
Good for you.
You've got your certification now too?
No, I didn't put it into the certification. I just wanted to take the test.
Okay.
To see what, what the test was, yeah.
Basically, the test is pulled right from the manual. They just go through the chapters and pick out. And there were, you know, there were a couple of things that I actually had to look up to confirm. And now I know, or I've been reminded. One of the things that I was reminded of, because I had read this like years, years ago. And I thought it was foolish that, I think it's foolish now, but according to the state, if you make a motion to disapprove, no, if you make a motion to approve something and the motion fails, then you have to make a motion to disapprove it and hopefully that passes. My mind, that makes no sense, but that's the way the state wants it done. And going forward, if I remember, that's not always the way. A couple of other things.
I forgot you.
Which puts you in a really weird place because if it's a, if it's a three to three vote and you make a disapprove, it's also a three to three voting.
That, that's why I said that the requirement makes no sense. Makes no sense at all. But who would argue with the state? Okay, anybody else have any new business that they would like to discuss?
Anything new in the master plan?
Uh, master plan, we are having our next meeting on, I think it's the twelfth of September. We're going to get back together and regain our momentum that I think kind of slacked off over the summer. Rob, how are you doing on the grown photographer? Because photography seems to be one of the big things that we're.
She finally got back to me and she's refreshing the price quote.
Hasn't, hasn't done it yet, okay. Hopefully soon. Clearly, we're not, or we didn't make the late July, early August public meeting, I'm correct? I'm disappointed, but so be it. Definitely slow, slowly.
You'll get more people in the fall than the summer.
Is, is it possible to get, to get a draft, to get a copy of the draft?
Of the entire plan? Yeah.
Not, not printed, just something.
Yeah, Rob, when you sent that notice and complete document out to planning board members or to task force members, did you also send it to this group? Planning board is up to date. Any other thoughts from anyone? Wanted to make the motion to adjourn.
I do.
Go.
Second. Motion we adjourn, second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Oh. Hey, no, there are, there are no days. Okay, we are adjourned. It is eight fifteen or eight sixteen, somewhere around there.
Is he here? Go ahead. You can sign the Mylar right here.
I will sign it before I leave.
Awesome, thank you. It's the certification on my.